We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Jerry Thorpe of the Faith Community Center. Pastor?
Good Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've given our city, and I pray that you will bless this meeting tonight, Lord God, and that you'll give our leaders here wisdom as they conduct their business. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Budd.
Here.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing regarding the rezone that was held September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the regular meeting held September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the cemetery board of managers meeting held September sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the public facilities committee meeting held September twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held September twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held September twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, minutes of the finance committee meeting held September twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, and minutes of the emergency services committee meeting held October second, two thousand and fourteen. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Go ahead.
Sean Burdell, second by Alderman Heberlin. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, we have a new police officer. I'd ask Officer Chase Dickey to please stand, and ask Pam Peabody to please swear in our new officer.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer according to the best of your ability.
Okay, next we have a resolution, this being an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and the Taylorville Park District regarding borrowed equipment.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, for the second, second by Alderman Coontz. Discussion or comment?
Comment.
Go ahead with the comment.
Reading through this, Your Honor, is there anything that states that is to be used only by employees properly trained and/or certified to operate the said borrowed equipment? Or is this pretty much going to be left open that they can utilize this, let's say a back row, for instance, and somebody gets on there and has never used it?
Yeah.
Good point.
I, I don't know, I mean, uh...
I can address that.
Go ahead.
The actual agreement that you're approving provides that only the city does the sewer work and with our employees. It does not allow the district to use their employees or personnel to use that machine.
On a particular machine?
For borrowed equipment?
This is a different ordinance.
Twelve sixty-six?
Correct. Not correct.
Thank you. I think.
I was reading the sanitary district one.
That's where I see it.
On the televising sewer.
Okay.
That I saw in your minutes.
So we're in agreement?
So you were ahead of me when you were saying.
We're in agreement that we're disagreeing.
Absolutely. Change, let's write that down.
Now, I know our superintendent's got the answer to this, so, Dick?
They never let anybody run a stump grinder, don't know about that.
Okay. And, and you're very protective of our equipment, so you don't let somebody that doesn't know how to operate it. That does beg the question, is that something we need to put in the ordinance?
You got it in your sanitary, I mean, you're televising sewer work. We can put that in this one, in all the other forms if you want.
Well, but we, we want to allow the qualified people to use our equipment so that we don't have to send an employee at all times, but we just want to make sure they know what they're doing.
That can be put in there.
Okay.
If that's your motion, we can amend that.
Has amended.
The Park District has borrowed the stump grinder before, and Gary Brown has trained two of the employees to use that stump grinder. He does not, all the employees use it, and they just recently used it to cut the trees down that were diseased and dying on Jane Street and take the stumps out. So I don't have a problem with it.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next we have a resolution, Maintenance of Streets and Highways by the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, the MFP funds, and it'll actually be a motion from tonight's street sewer committee that we just completed.
You want to wait until we do?
Well, is there any reason to wait?
The minutes are not on the agenda.
Right.
So, so I'd entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make my motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Heberlin. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next we have an ordinance establishing the salaries for the aldermen for the city of Taylorville.
Second.
Alderman Budd.
Second.
Second by Alderman Voda. Discussion or comment?
Just...
Alderman Jones.
I did propose a possible motion of lowering that salary down to five hundred dollars a month, but I could not gather any support for a second, so, although it's not in the minutes, I did want to make sure that we had it recorded somewhere. Thank you.
Anyone else, any comments? Roll call, please.
I'll make my comment.
Alderman Dortchiness.
We've, we've done this before, and I've said this before, oftentimes we don't earn the money, the five seventy-nine, sixty-three, that we're getting paid, but more times than not, we are.
Other comments before we vote? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have an ordinance deleting section seven dash two dash two D and amending portions of section seven one dash four, seven two dash one, seven two dash five, seven three dash six, seven three dash eight, and seven five dash six of the city code, this being the Lake Taylorville regulations.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Walters. Discussion or comment? Alderman Walters.
No, go ahead.
My comment, Your Honor, I wanted to thank the superintendent, Alan Jackson, as well as the committee chairman, Martin Voda, for looking at my notes regarding this and putting in place some of my suggestions that I had. I do appreciate that.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes...
You vote on this, too?
I vote yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, and finally we have a, a, a motion and approval to accept Star Electric's offer to donate lighting fixtures and to install them at Oak Hill Cemetery for the purposes of illuminating the cannons out there. Alderman Burdell? Do a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, go ahead with the comment. Alderman Burdell?
This is just an ongoing extension of all the fantastic donations we've got out at the cemetery with this cannon upgrade. We had two or three different business owners in town donate their services and/or equipment to get this done, and this is just another local electric company that would like to, no, and sell the, like, provide them free of charge, so I think it's a fantastic thing to begin with.
Alderman Dortchiness.
If you haven't been out there and seen those cannons, they did a fantastic job. Those are really, really gorgeous.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to city attorney updates.
Four quick matters, gentlemen, regarding your Ameren easement negotiations. I've been sending you some emails. We're still waiting to hear back from the attorney from Ameren. I have not yet heard yet. I thought I would perhaps this week, so I have nothing further related to report on that. I assume you're working forward with getting some kind of a, a number appraisal or something that you may want to throw at them when we do get the report back from their attorney as to the language changes that we proposed. Secondly, we're getting very close to turning over all these OV files to the debt collection partners. I've met with the, the local judge, the circuit clerk, with Mr. Bonister of the debt collection partners company. We've looked over a list, and the list we're going to be turning over is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars of bad debt, or delinquent debt, I should say, of that list. We're only going to pull, I think, about six files. We've put together a motion in order to, according to what the judge wanted, in terms of vacating the existing payment order so they can be effectively transferred over to the collection company, and we had to revise that last Friday. The judge is gone this week, so it'll probably be the following week before we get this put in place, and hopefully we'll get that done in short order. Next, regarding your IEP A litigation concerning your airport project, the mayor, Alderman Voda, and Bill Newberry, we've met. We've also spoken with the attorney from EPA. You've been copied on their letters, EPA's proposals, which we understand is probably going to be it. We had some questions and some interpretation of a line item of that. Hopefully this week we will be getting permission to talk with their lead engineer and come back with you with the proposal, which may include us doing some of the finished work just to get the job done in terms of the fence and the asphalt, and I've got some final figures from Mr. Newberry today that we can send out to you. And then finally, on your noise ordinance, I did meet with Alderman Jones. I noticed there were some concerns from the ordinance committee, Mr. Walters had some. I think we've corrected what Mr. Jones wanted. I just now need to meet with your police chief, because apparently he had some concerns. We'll get that taken care of. So with that, I think that's all we have tonight.
Okay. Alderman Heberlin?
In, in reference to the airport and the IEP A work, why would we take on the task of the, the asphalt work and finishing the fence repairs?
That's a very good question, but the way it was posed to IEP A, we would get the money for it. We would get paid by IEP A, it would not be out of our pocket. And the dollar amount that we're talking about was confirmed with Mr. Newberry today with the two vendors, just so we can get this thing done. Now, we haven't discussed that with Mr. Laker at this point. We merely posed a question to the IEP A attorney that if the council would decide to do that, would we be allowed to do it? And would we get the money that was allocated and approved by EPA to pay for that process? And the answer was yes.
But, if I might, I, I thought part of the contract that Mr. Laker signed...
He is obligated to do it.
...that work was specified in that contract, then, if that's true, why would we then take on that task?
Actually, the way that, that's, the contract is, Mr. Laker actually wouldn't be doing any of the work anyway. It's going to be as a defense company and the Lowes, I believe is the name of it, so it'd be a pass-through anyway. So what we were just thinking about is, we'll just pay them directly with the same EPA funds that he would receive.
But if it's, it's his responsibility, why aren't we forcing him to comply with his responsibilities, Rocky?
We haven't got to that point yet, that's just...
It sounds like you're getting awful close to it.
We asked the question of EPA, given the, the desire to get it concluded, and the history of some issues of not getting the things properly done that we wanted to have done, and that if we can get all the other numbers agreed to by the, the consulting engineers and by Mr. Laker, leaving those two items that would just be, say, okay, Lowes, fence company, you do it, instead of the money coming to the city, we give it to Laker, Laker gives it to them, the money would just go to the city, and the city would then pay these people.
I'm just concerned with starting to...
It's just a faster process.
I'm just starting worried about, we're starting to capitulate on this thing, and, you know, you do two things and then you do three things. Then it gets out of hand.
I, I think the bottom line is, you know, after four years, we've decided it's, it's got to get done, and we, we don't want to argue about it for another two years.
Right.
So, you know, if we can get this darn thing done and make it safe and then look good for us out there, and it doesn't cost us anymore, then obviously he doesn't get credit for that on his end, you know, and it's, if, if, if we ever do go to somewhere and we don't have an agreement and we have to go litigation, that, that comes off the top of his contract anyway.
I understand all that, that it is his responsibility.
You're absolutely correct, by contract, and there's been no decision made. We just asked that as an option. If we decided, if the council decided to do that, could we? And our, and the answer was yes. So, there'll be no decisions made. Okay.
Any other comments? Alderman Voda?
If I recall correctly, and I know we did, we had agreed to this previously and brought it to council, and it was tabled at that time. This had already been brought to the table, that we would finish this project, meaning the, the blacktop and the fencing, at our expense, and I believe at that time, Mr. Newberry was what, roughly, give or take ten? And we're coming in well under that if we pursue these numbers that you presented today to, to myself and the attorney and the mayor. So it's not like it's something that hasn't been talked about previously, it's just never been moved upon, and we're just confirming with the legal aspects with the IEP A as to whether we would be able to proceed with that process should we opt to do that, way to put closure on this. That's what it's about. I hope that makes plenty of mud in the water for you.
Sure, we want to move the responsibility from him to us.
If you want to look at it that way, I would...
Well, I believe that's the way that it is, though.
And, and I want to look at it, the, my direction is that if we can get this thing moving along, and it would move it along that much quicker to be able to do that ourselves directly, that's how I would like to see it done, so we put closure on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to mayor updates. Okay, I want to begin by congratulating everyone on a wonderful Chili Fest and the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth celebration this weekend. I mean, I want to thank everyone, when I say that, I'm talking about probably over a hundred different people working to put this thing together, and I want to thank the newspaper and the radio for their great coverage. Randy Miller, you know, he puts in countless hours promoting Chili Fest and, and this year, the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, and then he's up there for almost two solid days, you know, performing his services as master of ceremony, and he did a great job yet again, so we thank you for that. The Breeze, Breeze Courier's coverage leading up to and including the event was absolutely spectacular as well. I mean, if you got the, the edition they handed out the, last week, it was just amazing and something everyone should keep. I mean, you talk about the history of the county and the town and the townships and everything else, you got it right there. It's fantastic, so...
My wife needed help just to carry the newspaper in, so they...
That's good, that's good. And I want to thank those who attended the event, the past mayors who attended. I want to thank Representative Wayne Rosenthal and Congressman Rodney Davis for, for taking time out to, to come and spend time with us and share the special day. And a special thank, of course, to all the members of the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth Celebration Committee. I mean, we, we had at least thirty different meetings trying to pull this thing together, so I want to thank them. Several people actually sent congratulatory, congratulatory video clips that I've kind of put together, and I've provided a link to those on our city's website. We wanted to try and actually initially play those in the local cinema, then when Mrs. Taylor decided to come and, and put her movie in there, we kind of got squeezed out a little bit. So I want to, want those people to, want the public to have a chance to view those. I mean, some of those included comments from Senator Andy Menard, Attorney General Lisa Madigan, Speaker John Boehner, Representative Rosenthal, Congressman Davis, the Channel Twenty Sunrise News staff. We also have additional congratulatory video clips from actress Joyce Taylor herself, Yvonne Craig, actress Sandy Duncan, and the actor Jamie Harold from here in Taylorville. So if you get a chance, take a look at that on our website, and I think you'll be impressed. That's all I got, unless someone else has something. If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Discussions or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and or refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. We start off with Public Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two motions coming out of my committee. The first one is a motion to accept a proposal from Kevin Hamel Concrete for labor and materials for our new concrete slab for the back lot of the fire station, that costs a fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, and to tear out existing curb and sidewalk and replace it with six-inch thick wire reinforced pad, eight by thirty-four, at a cost of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, and to place that in that motion. Second.
Second by Alderman Walters. Discussion or comment? Alderman Heberlin?
I oppose this at the committee level. I just think that at this time, we have a better place to spend sixteen thousand dollars than this project. Thank you.
Alderman Voda?
Can I feel comfortable knowing that this is going to be the final amount that we will be spending at that facility to finalize the concrete work there, or are we still looking at more work being done in that? If this is going to be the final, I think that's fine. I'll support it, but I want to make sure that we aren't continuing to add and add and add and, and repair and fix on something that should have been done just a few times ago.
Any other questions? We vote? Roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one.
Second motion was to accept a proposal for low pavement and a seal coat incorporated at a cost of one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars for sealing of the front parking lot of the fire station. Place that in that motion.
Okay, give a second on that.
Thank you.
Alderman Burdell? Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Motion passes eight to zero. Move on to the Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make a motion to approve the van booster charitable fund drive at the corner of Webster and West Main Cross on October the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Second by Alderman Coontz. Discussion or comment?
And approving the special event form that you announced that was completed at the committee level.
Thank you.
Exactly. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
I can make a motion to allow the Taylorville Sanford District to install a twenty-six-foot long guard rail along South Cherokee Street, adjacent to their, their facility there on South Cherokee Street.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heberlin. Discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement form to provide equipment, vehicles, and personnel to perform televising and inspection work.
Okay, second on that one?
Second.
Alderman Heberlin? Discussion or comment on this? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Motion to approve the seat board meeting minutes of September the sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heberlin? Discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Motion to allow Superintendent Wiseman to purchase a two thousand and fifteen Ford F-350, regular cab, four-by-four pickup with single rear wheels at the state bid price from Bob Writings, including a snow plow and a tommy lift, that a cost of forty thousand dollars, four hundred and fifteen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heberlin?
Comment.
Comment.
four-by-four pickup with single rear wheels at the state bid price from Bob Writings, including a snow plow and a tommy lift, at a cost of $40,415.
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherly.
Comment.
Comment. Alderman Bud, I think I heard first.
On this here, it doesn't say anything about the toolbox bed, the naphide bed that's on this. So since that's not on there, this price would not be $40,000.
It's just part of the package.
It just says snow plow and tommy lift. It doesn't say the naphide toolbox bed.
Does toolbox come with it, Dick, or not?
That is part of it.
I thought it was on there.
Alderman Vota.
Thank you, Your Honor. My apologies for not being at the meeting, the committee meeting when this was discussed this time, as the first one. Didn't support the purchase at that time. Now we're coming back with a $40,415 truck that we budgeted $30,000 for, gentlemen. At the same meeting, we were discussing, the recent meeting of the Finance Committee, we discussed the financing of sewer repairs. With that, we aren't sure exactly how much money we're looking at that we want to be able to, say we say, pigeonhole, to make sure we have funding to cover this expense that has been approved by the city council. Said the funds were not budgeted in this fiscal year, and will have to come from the new sewer line item numbers, from other sewer line item numbers. With that, that means we're adjusting the budget to make up for unknown expenses. I did make the suggestion that we hold off on the $50,000 payment for this quarter to the water fund, so we did have a little bit of a cushion, should we have to go back and look for this funding. That was not supported very well, so we're going ahead and make that payment this year, or this quarter. One of the big issues I had with this truck is it's not a like-for-like for what was presented to the city council or the committee. We were presented a picture of a truck that was four-wheel drive, eight-cylinder, basic pickup truck, you know, I don't know exactly whether it was three-quarter, 10, or what, but we're looking at a substantially heavier piece of equipment with a lot more equipment on it, and it's not a like-for-like. If we were a like-for-like, we'd be within the budget numbers. I'd have no problem with this and would support the purchase. The other thing we have to look at is, we just approved the purchase of two police vehicles by buying used vehicles or program cars. Why can't we do this with this truck? Why are we pursuing a brand-new truck every time? We need to replace something. The police officers that are driving these vehicles, they were tickled to death, be able to go up there, pick out a vehicle, and now they've got something that is trustworthy on the road. It wasn't a new vehicle, but it is a quality vehicle. This one here is even better, because I didn't even think this was going to come to the table. I got to the airport, what was it, Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday last week, and talked with Mr. Newberry, and we're leaning on his truck, discussing some issues, and I asked him, I said, "What do you need a truck like this for?" And he says, "I don't really need one this big." And my bulb goes off in my head, says, "Would you be interested in transitioning this over to the sewer department to replace the truck that they're wanting to replace, and potentially getting a smaller truck that he could utilize more efficiently?" And he had no problem with that. Now, do you expect the city council to say, "Yeah, we're going to look at that"? No, I really don't expect you gentlemen to look at that, because you're pretty much set on buying a $40,000 truck at a $30,000 budget, and we don't have money to pay for sewer repairs. So with that said, Your Honor, I am not going to support this purchase. I've given an option out there that we can do. We're with $30,000 budget, and we're spending $40,000. I said, "I will not be supporting this, and I hope that respectfully, that you will consider a veto on this purchase, should it pass this city council." Thank you, Your Honor, for the time.
Alderman Coons first, and then Alderman Walters.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, for the record, I did vote no on this committee as well. I would support Alderman Vota's substitute suggestion if it would ever come to fruition. When my pickup truck went out a long time ago, I didn't go looking for Corvettes because they were on sale, you know? Or in our terms, in the public sector, we call that state bid. I looked for something that was, as he mentioned, like-for-like, and for that reason, I can't support this.
Alderman Walters.
One comment that I want to make, and I respect Alderman Vota's comments, although I don't agree with him, but he said that the police department purchased two used vehicles, program vehicles. Those were unmarked vehicles. They're not being driven by the regular on-the-street patrol officers. They're for a specific purpose. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else before we vote? Roll call, please.
Ray Coats.
No.
Martin Vota.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
A motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the salary of the alderman, maintaining the current salary for the upcoming four-year term. Make that an informed motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman, was that Vota?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
I like cycle drive.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $482,822.81. Second. Second, Alderman Vota, give you a second. Alderman Bertle, go ahead, Alderman Bud.
May I make my comment first?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Alderman Vota.
Your Honor, I want to request that we have on page 20, under Bob Writings Ford, the equipment of 2015 F-250 four-by-four pickup and plow. Like I had that pulled and voted on separately. And the total number, then with that removed from the current total, is $450,523.81.
Can you repeat that one more time? Four fifty?
Four fifty, five twenty-three, eighty-one.
Okay. All right, Alderman Bud, do you amend your motion?
Yes.
For that amount? Alderman Bertle, amend your second?
Yes.
Okay. Is that it for Alderman Vota?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alderman Bud, go ahead with your comments.
Okay, insurance for all departments, $103,219.45. Healthcare tax, $3,180.18. Travelers for general liability, $42,710.50. Workers' comp for November, $26,690. And those four insurance bills total $175,813.13. Electric for all departments was $2,388.6. Telephone for all departments, $1,053.6. Office supplies for all departments, $1,415.71. Big R Walmart and Ron's for miscellaneous, $2,010.24. Garbage, $2,220.35. Senior citizens of Christian County, $5,000. TAP Business Systems, this is for the new copier and supplies, $10,598.51. Triple-A Asbestos, $8,510. Altorfer for generator maintenance and supplies, $7,769.33. Trico Equipment Company for supplies and repairs, $1,878.54. Lilly Signs, $1,058.02. Edco Group for an annual license, $1,134. United States Post Office for postage, $1,220. Illinois Department of Revenue, August gas sales, $1,900. Unique Temporary Help, $3,997.94. Police Department, Bob Writings for two cars, $40,000. N Sync Systems for maintenance agreement, $3,950. Ten-Eight Video for three car cameras, $4,485. Fire Department, R and B Auto for maintenance, $1,069.82. Interstate Batteries, $1,000. ATI Services of Illinois for maintenance repair, $1,620.95. Street and Sewer Department, Lewis Marsh, $15,089.70. Bealman Logistics for trucking, $7,630.83. Bodine Electric for traffic light repairs, $964.46. Emerson, Ronald Emerson for maintenance and repairs, $1,000. Hall Sign Company for signs and supplies, $6,313.27. Folgers Flag and Decorations, flags for the square, $1,290.53. SNS Fencing, $1,000. Water Department, Benton and Associates for the new treatment plant, $14,702.12. Bob Writings for the new truck and maintenance, $32,454.74. Midwest Meter, meters for $4,181.84. PDD, PDC Lab for water testing, $1,269. Chemicals, $19,486.43. Airport, Crawford Murphy Tilly for taxiway extension, $23,877.94. Cemetery for La Grange Monument, the granite cannon bases, $42,989.17. Lake Department, Zax Truck Repair, this is the maintenance on the loader, $2,000. And all of those total $454,247.79.
Thank you.
Alderman Walters.
Clarification from Alderman Vota, page, what was that, page 20? What item did you want Vota to circle up?
That was on that four by four.
For the water department?
Yes. Okay.
Additional questions? Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coats.
Yes.